No, maybe that cleaning lady shouldn't clean.
Drag it around.
Move it around. I don't want to move it around for someone else. Maybe you can randomly move it around.
You get it up there too?
Yes, I did.
I didn't get it.
But yeah, if you're random. Will you stand for the plenarum? Our plenarum is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call Jesse, please.
Ruben.
Here.
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 Think I just saw. Call to order at seven oh one. The open meeting act is on the South Wall for your reading enjoyment. Did everyone have time to review the agenda?
Yep, I'm ready to accept the March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three proposed agenda.
Second. Andrea, move. Carrie's second that we accept the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three agenda in discussion. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Motion carried. Prior meeting minutes from February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Move to set action on prior meeting minutes, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, and waive the reading.
Second.
Toni moved, and Sam's second that we accept the prior meeting minutes from February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, and waive the reading. Any discussion? Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Toni?
Yes.
Motion carried. Edward, do you have any communications for us?
I do, I do, I do.
Alrighty, we need to whip our calendars out.
I did, I did receive, I'll start with some communication that I received. I did receive a letter from a neighbor that I'm gonna pass around, and then I'll share this with the, for the citizens advisory committee as well, so. Um, okay, upcoming, upcoming meetings, uh, Secretary will have their previously scheduled meeting tomorrow at five fifteen in this room, at five fifteen P M. in this room. Uh, and then the tree board will meet on the twenty-first of this month at four P M. in this room. Um, and that'll do us until our next meeting. For now, nothing is scheduled between those two things. Uh, I will be gone at the main annual conference from the twenty-first to the twenty-third. Uh, I want to spark a little bit about the planning and zoning conference that I went to. Uh, they're sort of regular annual soiree, uh, very, very big conference. Uh, there's a lot of planning and zoning things that, uh, that were just big. Some stuff coming on the horizon. It's all dependent upon if legislation gets passed or not, so. It's all hearsay until the legislators act on it, so no worries there, but I'll, I'll keep you up to date. Um, got some good contacts for, um, when we send out an RFP to do our zoning ordinance, to read, to, to update our zoning ordinance, so that, that was good. Had a chance to watch a couple of, uh, uh, speeches, a, a, ten or couple of classes, uh, one of them from our, our Western Forester, uh, Chrissy Land, uh, talking about the, the planning. She shared a very class on, are you, are you leaving a legacy or are you leaving a failure? Uh, it was very interesting to hear her how she's implementing trees into, uh, urban forestry and that's, I mean, even though we're rural, we're considered urban forestry within the city limits, so that was, that was kind of neat to hear her talk about that. Um, and then, of course, the regular classes from David Katak and, and Chad Naby, sort of the two experts in the field of planning and zoning, so very, very good. Networking was great, um, got some notes and some stuff that we're gonna, we're gonna look at our own codebook and stuff like that, see if we need to implement any of those changes right away, so.
Okay.
Um, and then, yeah, I talked about the main annual conference coming up in Kearney, so, um, Bill is at, uh, the World War Annual Conference for the next couple of days, giving his required continuing education hours. He's thrilled. Um, and then I believe Jesse's scheduled for, um, Clerks Academy, yeah?
Clerks Academy, shine, Jesse.
This week, Wednesday through, through Friday, so. Uh, that's all I have for now.
Very good. Thank you very much for those updates. I got one more?
I, I mean, I can do it in communications or, or standing committee, I can, whatever, I'll do it in communications, so.
Okay.
Um, the bids were open today for the, the sixth of Warren, uh, dip, dip intersection improvement, um, as well as the first section of the South Central Avenue project. Uh, there was three bidders and, uh, TC Engineering is preparing the engineer's recommendation as well as the bid sheet for us, so. Bill will have those for the city council to award bid.
Excellent. Looking forward to that.
Uh, plate, or CSC, uh, steel construction and, uh, level. I'll, I'll see where the three goes.
Very good.
It was great that we had some competitive, competitive bids and more than one to choose from, so.
Maybe it'll be nice if more of them bid or?
Yes, absolutely. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um, standing committee reports. Andrea?
The library bet met last Wednesday. It was pretty much regular board meeting. They are having their annual puzzle competition April first, I think it was from like one to five forty-five.
One to five forty-five. Thank you very much. Kimberly?
I do not have any.
Toni? Sam?
Yeah.
Alright.
CRA met, uh, this afternoon.
Yeah.
You didn't get anything?
Just got back from the vacation tour.
Okay, well, uh, anyway, CRA met today at noon, um, had a couple of ma, uh, agenda items on there. Uh, one was to, to, uh, approve the purchase agreement for two forty-five Lincoln Avenue, um, so we, we, we got that signed and I sent it over to the property owner for their signature. Um, then we talked a little bit about, um, proposing another, or, or approaching another property owner in town about purchasing, uh, their property for, uh, to build a home on. Um, our, our proposition is to again work with the, the Flanders and Southwest Nebraska Community Betterment Corporation, um, as she is the go-to for grant running. Um, so we can incorporate that again into some infill lots that we're doing right now with our two projects. Um, again, I could've done that in communications, that's where I was kind of washi-washi.
That's kind of simple.
But the, the first home is, is under contract. It's on its foundation, it's on its basement.
That sounds.
And the second home is in the process of being built, so I'm sure the noises would love to give you a, a tour, if you'd like to go by and see it. I did tweak it a little bit from the first one. Just the window sizes they went with on this one. Other than that, it's the same, same foreplanting, uh, cookie cutter approach, just, uh, that will go like, uh, six oh four. Six oh four dark fields. So. We're looking, we're looking forward to that. Being done, and then Amy, Amy's one of the first, and she said, hey, I, I got two more that I can move on if you're ready. So, and if she's, if she's willing, I'll, I'll keep her, I'll keep her full.
That is exciting.
Yep. Um, and then we talked a little bit about the development of four thirty's for the CRA property and, uh, tidied up some things on the map and sent that back to the engineers.
Very good. Alright, thank you very much. Did everyone have time to review the enforcement sheriff and law reports? Thank you, Sheriff, for sending us. Appreciate that. Alright, Jesse did get us the financials. Jesse?
Um, I was gonna mention a couple of things. The airport, uh, the grants and bonds. We will be receiving our last, uh, reimbursement for ALOS in this upcoming financials. And then, uh, we should be getting the closeout one then on the access road to follow when it's available. This was our last large payment access road. Oh, and then we also received our highway incentive payment for going through our process that we do, except three thousand dollars on this one.
Okay, very good. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Alright, thank you, Jesse. Before we do public comment, I do want to do some housekeeping. I want to remind that the city council welcomes pers- participation in public comment. And people may address the city council on matters of concern, um, please state your name before you address the council. And please limit your, your time in, when you're addressing the council, um, just as we do have a poll agenda. And I typically, um, it, there's one spokesperson per group, but I'm gonna, since this is a ongoing, um, matter that seems to be important to lots of people, I'm gonna say two people, I'm gonna limit two people per group, um, to, to speak to the same subject. So if there's ten people, only two of those ten can speak during public comment. And if there's one, there's only one. So if it's the same group presenting the same subject, um, please appoint, um, two of your people. And then limit your time remembering that there's others that would like to speak to the council. The council will listen to comments, but if, if it's not on the agenda, we can't take action or respond, and that's due to the open meeting act, which is available online if you want to research that, but it is also on the South Lawn. So that's, it comes down from the state. It's not a rule made by us, it's ju, it's a rule we have to follow per state statutes. So now I'm gonna open the floor to public comments. Name, please?
Hi, I'm Chris Long. Um, everyone here knows that John is the speaker. So, I have, I have my notes.
Okay.
Um, he couldn't be here tonight, or, or he would, he wouldn't be here tonight. Okay. Uh, first, I'd like to thank this council for approving the downtown renovations and for getting, footing the bill for all of the sidewalks, so the store owners did not have to pay for any of that. Thank you very much for doing that. Uh, secondly, and I'm sure that's why a lot of people aren't here, um, I'm sorry I'm getting into this a little bit down the road. Uh, so I don't know what kind of discussion has been made, um, on this next, um, ordinance. Um, I'd like to state that I'm in favor of the city of grant taking action on vacant properties. Can this be done without a new ordinance? I don't know. Um, can this be done by everybody working together? I don't know. That would really be nice if it could be. Um, I, um, I guess for you, the tough part is you're the ones that have to hear everything and make that final decision. Um, and only certain property owners in this, in the city can answer that.
Uh-huh.
I do feel like there are vacant properties that need to be addressed. Does a new ordinance need to be enacted? I've read through it, um, you know, I think I understand most of it. Uh, but I am in favor of the city moving forward on doing something for vacant lots. Uh, I appreciate your time on this, and I appreciate you giving me the time to speak on this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Felt like you.
Thank you.
That's why I moved, sorry.
Do I have any other public comments?
Yeah, my name is Wade Hill. Uh, again, not like most of you know me. Anyway, uh, I guess I'm gonna speak out against the ordinance. Uh, I mean, I think, uh, you know, we're a pretty small community. I think a lot of us think we need less government, not more government. To me, this feels like it's government creep. I mean, we just get new ordinance after new ordinance. I don't ever see any getting taken away. I mean, we got this issue with the federal level, the state level. I really hate to see our local level start this, you know, and I'll be the first to admit, I supported all you guys when you worked for the election. And overall, I think you're doing a great job. I just think, you know, there's either an agenda or something. I just don't know why we're pushing so much with, I, I feel it's government overreach in areas. So, I mean, Grant's been a small town. We've gotten along for years without a lot of this stuff, and I just feel that we're pushing the wrong direction. And I've got plenty of people I talk to on a daily basis that kind of feel the same way, so. Anyway, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments today? Alright, thank you all very much. Unfinished business. Ordinance number twenty-three oh one oh three, ordinance enacting the vacant property registration act. And this is, the third reading was February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Tom?
Can I, can I do an apology in, in John Thomas?
Can you hear us?
Hello, this is John Thomas with Sebeloa. Um, can, can you hear me at, in the city council meeting?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
We can hear you now.
Hi Bobby Pettit is here.
Hi Bobby.
With Five Rule. Hello, I'm not in a car.
Stay where you're at.
Yeah, I'm in one spot.
Okay. Alright, we'll, uh, we'll, uh, let Tana do some speaking here, and then we'll, we'll, I'm sure the council will have questions for you, so.
So, the last time you guys, uh, wanted us to, to get out the, kind of the red edit line, so that it was a clean one. So that's what's in front of you. Um, going through this again today, I had a chance to speak with John, um, finally today, we caught up. And, um, you know, him and I kind of discussed about the fact that obviously this is new legislation that came through. There's not a lot, there's no pieces as to if anyone has actually filed a lawsuit against, you know, a city or a village or whatever the case may be. Um, so there's not really anything to hold back on as to like, this is what potentially is to have a look at, or, you know, so things may look, it's in the beginning stages. Um, there are other communities that are going forward with it. I don't know if there has been a lot of an issue, um, with the other communities, and maybe Bobby can answer that question for us tonight, I don't know. Um, in my research, you know, my question with John was still the fact that like, when Bobby spoke last time, she said that they were going to be the ones that would then register the property. My issue is still, I don't feel like they are the ones that can register the property that has to be property, or based on the language and the statutes. It's just, it, cause it's a shop, not a maid, um, and so that makes it pretty explicit that that has to be done by a property owner. So, you know, if you want to go forward, my suggestion would be to, um, if you're going to pass this ordinance, I would hold off on appointing Five Rule and, uh, Sebeloa at this point, just because I feel there's a lot more discussion there as to what they do, what we want them to do in order to feel like we're not overstepping those bounds as to what the city can do and cannot do. Um, according to statutes, you can enforce fees for them not registering vacant property. Um, but again, I strongly feel that, like, Five Rule or the city can't just register them on that vacant property act. Um, and then I guess the only other change I'd have to this from what you guys have in front of you is in section. Oh, well, I'm sorry, move on it. Send the penalties.
One of eleven.
Yes. So section five, one 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 on section A is a broadened statement as to what the city can do for a penalty. Um, and so in that second sentence, um, including but not limited to, you see that part where I would, I would put in front of the civil actions and the means.
Okay.
Before the civil actions, that would be the only addition that I would add to what this document is if you're going to pass it. Um, you know, there is some risk on the city, obviously, in passing this, and just because there hasn't, as far as the statutes, though, there isn't any thing further down the road that shows, you know, if a property owner doesn't register it, you know, then there are civil regulations that can happen to them, whereas other portions of the law have that kind of layout. Um, so as far as the penalties and stuff, there is some guidance in the statutes that we have for us, which we would need to follow if that's where you wanted to go. Um, but I would say that you want to make sure that if we do, we do pass this ordinance, then we would also have to pass one which should accommodate those fees, but I would recommend that we do those, or, or those the realm of what's in the statute.
Statute.
That would be my thoughts and suggestions, um, but just know that there is potential risk that constitutionality of, uh,
With the new.
Right, could be challenged.
Madam Mayor, I did, I'd like to submit to the record, I did receive seven letters of similar stature, um, and then two emails in support. Um, that were turned in my office or emailed to me in support of the vacant property registration act.
Okay.
Yes. So, might be a good time here to sort of end up the Bobby and John, and see if they have anything after Bobby and John, did you, were you able to hear Tana clear, please?
I don't know, did you hear me?
Yes.
John, you go first.
Okay. Um, so yes, I was able to Tana clearly, um, I think she accurately, um, recounted our, um, telephone conversation earlier today. Um, during that conversation, I was able to get a copy of the, um, proposed ordinance. I, I believe that's what you're looking at now. Um, that's, as far as that ordinance, that, that language, how that's drafted, um, that, that is not necessarily consistent with, um, the language that um, Five Rule and Sebeloa had, had been utilizing in other municipalities. Um, I, I'm not, I'm not sure on, on where that came from, but, um, as far as Five Rule and Sebeloa working together in a number of municipalities across the state, we have a pretty standard ordinance, um, that is, uh, at least the skeleton that's used, and then it can be further tailored to, to each municipality. And so what, what you're looking at, I was only able to take a, a first look at earlier today. Um, but it's.
Do real quick, um, I got that ordinance, um, I believe from your office. The only thing I did was change the font and the numbers so that they matched our codebook, so the five dash one one one, or whatever, you know, the section numbers. That's the only thing that was changed from what I received.
So, I'm not, I'm not saying I disagree with you or you're, you're wrong, but I, I never sent you that.
Okay.
So I don't know if what my office would have.
Okay.
Um, but, but I did take a look at it. I was able to send Tana, um, it was later in the afternoon, but a, a draft copy of what would we have used in, in the past in other municipalities. Um, so I, I think it's worth, um, if she hasn't had a chance to take a look at that, I, I would ask her to it if she is, is willing to do so. Um, but as far as, um, Tana's comments about the, the state statute actually granting authority to the municipality or a program administrator to register a property absent the, the property owner's consent, I agree with her that there, there's no express authorization. Um, I have had a chance to take a look at the legislative history and the debates that went on when the bill was being considered, and I think they, they do contemplate the ability to register a property by the municipality. I, I, you know, I, I'm not gonna represent that they thought outstate that, but, um, again, if I'm talking about debate on the legislatures or I'm obviously not finding something in the, uh, state statute, so I'm not trying to say, yeah, there's a hundred percent authority here for a program administrator to register properties. But, um, where, where we're coming from with Five Rule and Sebeloa's collaboration, if the statute passed this um, vacant property registry act with, um, a hundred percent reliant on property owners agreeing to register their property voluntarily, I mean, that, that essentially takes the teeth out of the usefulness of the program as a tool to identify, um, owners of vacant property and and incentivize them to develop or unload properties for development by other third parties. Um, so that's, I guess, a long-winded explanation of, I, I would agree that maybe this, this, it's not the best thing to, to pass this ordinance tonight. Um, given that apparently there's, I don't wanna say. Um, given that apparently there's, I don't wanna say miscommunication, but I, I've looked at what Tana sent me earlier today, and that's not something that my office, that's not something that I sent out, again, I, maybe it came from my office, I, I don't know that, but I, I certainly didn't send that out, so, um, and so it was done by accident, so I, I just, it's not something that's consistent with what Five Rule and Savala have been working with, um, in other municipalities. So to that end, you know, I, I apologize for however that got to you, but that's, that's not something I sent out, so. And with that, I, I will leave it to Bobby with, uh, maybe to touch on her experience actually administering this, this program in other municipalities.
Okay, um, I didn't make such a dramatic okay there. I'm assuming that everybody can hear me, Ed?
Yeah. I just turned you down.
You turned me down?
No. I was just kidding.
You get that a lot. Okay, so I do know that Doug, in our office, sent you like a sample packet of all the documents that we've created.
Yes.
On January nineteenth.
Yep.
Maybe that's where you're getting the, the sample ordinance, but I do know there's a couple references to like ninety days and a hundred and eighty days. I don't believe that's in our ordinance, but, um, the way that we are set up is that I would not have you adopt the ordinance under our, under our guidance until we were actually engaged with you. So our process is that you hire us to be your program administrator, you sign the contract, and engage with us, and then you also sign the engagement letter with Savala, and then we work with you to draft your ordinance. So, I sent Edward a sample of the ordinance and that was just part of a packet of all the forms that we use. But we wouldn't actually draft the City of Grant's ordinance until we were engaged and I was sitting there, um, not on Zoom, but in person with you when you adopted the ordinance. So, so regardless of whether or not you wanna have this program or have us do it for you, um, I would, if you were gonna hire us, I would not have you adopt the ordinance tonight, um, because I haven't, I haven't fully seen it. Or I haven't been the one to direct John to draft your ordinances and your resolutions and set what an easier code for you. So, so if you wanna go ahead and adopt the ordinance and administer the program on your own, you always have that right, you can do it yourself, there's a handful of communities. Angworth is one, Central City is another, that are administering their own program. Um, as far as the requiring the owner, I guess I'd go back to what John said about the, the debate that happened on the floor. I also followed this bill closely in twenty eighteen, and I know that it passed unanimously in the Senate, or the state legislature, I guess. And, um, so I believe that sooner or later we will get challenged. I, I was born and raised in Murnat, Nebraska. Um, I understand private property rights, I, I enforce property, uh, ordinances, I'm sorry, I enforce property codes of living in rural Nebraska, so, um, I always ask myself, okay, what am I gonna tell the judge if I am recommending a duty to do something that a private property owner is not gonna be in favor of? I always go all the way, fast forward all the way, put myself on the bench and ask myself what I would tell the judge. And in this case, I believe that if and when this program gets challenged, it's gonna be challenged based on process and not on spirit. So I don't think vacant property registration act is going to go away. I think that if it does get challenged, it's gonna be on a procedure, because the statutes didn't spell it out well enough, and so we had to make, uh, make a judgment call and keep pressing forward. And right now, we have six communities that we are administering the program for, and we've made judgment calls and we continue to press forward, knowing that if it's challenged by a property owner, we will, we will show our work, if you will, and we will explain to the judge and to anybody else what our thought process was and what our method was. And we use the same process or the same methodology in every community. Like John said, there's a couple tweaks you can make to the ordinance, I mean, maybe you don't wanna charge the maximum fees. Maybe you can decide you wanna allow some exceptions. I, I encourage you not to allow any exceptions. Um, but there are a couple of tweaks that you can make, but otherwise, we have a system and we have a process, and that is why we work together, because we both know the system and the process. Um, I just want to make one response too about, um, not having too much government, especially in a small town. And I, I can also understand and empathize with that, growing up in a village, but I also walk by an entire block of vacant houses every single day on my way to school. And when you look at vacant properties, I'm not talking about vacant properties that are for rent, vacant properties that are under construction, vacant properties where somebody has passed away and the family is grieving and trying to decide what to do. I'm talking about properties that have been vacant for years. Properties that have not paid their utility bill for years. I'm talking about porches that are falling in on themselves, because they've been sitting there so long without any exception. And then you constantly walk by properties like that, or you constantly look at lots like that as a kid, what does that tell you about yourself or about your community? So that's, that's what I'm focused on, and I honestly wish there had been a little bit more government interference in some of the small towns I've been a part of, where there was somebody that was considering the fact that there is a future for this community and that at one point in time, there was a group of appointed officials that invested in developing this plan and laying this street and laying these sanitary lines and laying these water mains, and that the officials, the elected officials we have today, they have a fiduciary duty to protect those investments. So I'm coming from rural Nebraska, none of us are in favor of big government, but I am in favor of somebody standing up for the people that are still paying their utility bills today. And I am in favor of somebody acknowledging the fact that our community is still gonna be here in fifty years and that we need your help. So that's just a little bit more of like, an emotional reason for doing this, but, um, and again, if you choose not to engage with Five Rule to administer the program, that's fine. If you choose to administer the program on your own, I will gladly share my notes with Ed and, and connect him with, um, Chris, with the administrators of the cities that are doing it on their own, because I really believe in this program. I really believe that chronic vacancies are, are not good for a community, and my whole career is dedicated to standing up for small towns, helping residents of small towns understand that they do have a future. So I totally believe in this program, whether you wanna use us to administer it or you wanna do it on your own, that's completely up to you. If you do it on your own, I'm, like I said, I'm happy to share all my notes with the city and with Tana and show you how I handle certain situations.
So.
That's it for now.
Bobby, just, it sounds like maybe you and I had just a little miscommunication, I, I, I was, I, I was under the, the, the assumption that with the, the engagement letter, you needed to come to the ordinance so that you could, you could proceed with your work, and I apologize for that. Um, and if, if there was anything, um, John, I, I apologize if I did anything on, on, on my end. Like I said, the only thing I, I did was change the, the numbering to fit our city code and the font, to fit our font. Um, but now that we have the, the ordinance that you've used in the other communities, I, I think we can, we can take a fresh look at this and make those changes necessary. So, Tana had something to do.
I guess Bobby, as far as your guys' company goes, I don't really understand the process of hiring you before the enactment of an ordinance at that point. Because if we didn't pass the ordinance, what would be the point of your services? And then if they don't pass the ordinance, then how do they get out of the contract with you? Cause obviously it would be moot point at that point.
Yeah, I guess if you decide not to pass the ordinance, then you would just go to the, um, termination clause of the contract, but, you know, if you, if you wanna look into this ordinance, then I'm basically gonna come to work for you as a consultant. I will, um, go back and forth with John to have the ordinance drafted and the resolution drafted. Um, I will take a look at the vacant properties that you have and decide how many that you're dealing with, and then also set up the database.
I guess my question though is, if, if they went forward and then you and John and I can't agree on the ordinance, just like with the one that John sent me late this afternoon, and there's still stuff in there that I would shouldn't base on the way that the statutes are written. If we can't agree to that, then what is the city as far as cost-wise, what does that cost the city?
Well, the initial investment is John and I's time to draft the ordinance, to come to Grant, to explain to you our ordinance and decide the parts of the ordinance that you wanna speak or change. Um, and I guess if you already going into this, just looking at our draft, don't agree, don't agree with the program, and it sounds like there's a couple of issues where we're not gonna be able to agree, then, then you probably don't need to hire us or sign the contract. Um, like I said earlier, when you do decide to hire us, it needs to be unanimous, and so I guess in the last six communities that have hired us, um, it's been unanimous that they wanted to work with us, and the city attorney, um, was behind it, was behind the process and saw the draft ordinance and was okay with the basic function of how the registry was gonna work. So, um, I haven't had that situation where we were engaged and then the city decided not to go forward.
But you said-
And one reason I like to have the contract is because, um, once we're hired, then I need to get you the resolution, I need to get you the ordinance that's just for Grant, and so there's a time investment on my part. And so, that's why I like to have the contract in place first, and then I'm actually working for the City of Grant. And I can allocate the time to do that.
My question is though, as you said, okay, then we tailor these to fit the city or the village to meet their expectations and their needs. So during that process, you get into this, there's things in here that I don't agree with or don't think that we can constitutionally like enforce as the City of Grant. And if you guys say, no, that's not work, how we're going to do that, then what happens? Like if you don't agree with the things that I made.
We can tailor, we can tailor and tweak the ordinance in some way. It's mostly, mostly the only tweaks we'll make is, um, what the exceptions are, what you will allow for exceptions, and then what you want the, how much you want to set the maximum fees. There are other parts of the ordinance that are non-negotiable. For instance, if they will not register their property, um, we either register for them or we will find them, we'll go with the finding the property owner one hundred dollars a day for refusing to comply. So, we strongly encourage you to go with just requiring them to register or with the administrator registering for them, instead of enforcing the one hundred dollars a day. But I guess, I guess there, there are a few tweaks in just how it actually operates. But then there's also some big non-negotiables. Like that, like what we're going to do if the owner refuses to self-register.
I guess based on that, I would say we should not enter into a contact with them because the statute is clear that it says shall be registered by the property owners, like the administrator cannot register them.
You know, and I would have to agree with Tana, because if your city attorney is not aligned with the way they're doing this, you're not gonna feel good about it. So, you know, you're welcome to adopt the vacant property registry act and, um, have your own city staff and Tana enforce it with you. I mean, I would, I would agree with Tana that maybe you should not hire us right now. We're clearly not aligned on some of these policies and procedures. We're gonna drive on, we keep working with the six communities that we have, following the system that we're following. And if and when it gets challenged, then I'm sure other communities will follow suit, depending on the way that ruling goes, but but I'm not waiting, I'm, I'm moving forward with this program and any community that wants to try it under this process.
Um, and I, and I would just, um, Ed, I'd just address your, your comments about any miscommunication, and that's why I'm, I'm here and Bobby's here. Um, I, I think it's just more efficient to get all of us in the same room as it were, even though we're, we're virtually, just to get some of this on the same page to know what we're all talking about. So I, I appreciate that, Ed, there's, I, I don't know that anyone did anything wrong, I just think there was some miscommunication somewhere along the way, so, so no sweat there. Um, and, and to Tana's comments, I mean, whether or not the, the council moves forward with hiring Five Rule and Savala or not, or, or adopting vacant property registry at all, um, I, I'd still just be very interested to, to speak with you, uh, to speak with Tana about, about some of her concerns. Um, a lot of the places that we do work with don't have city attorneys, you know, I, I wanna make this better, more sound from a legal perspective. Um, the attorneys that I work with are all in the same office, so it, it can sometimes be um, uh, one, one track, and, and I just would love the opportunity to speak with, um, Tana to get her outside perspective, if she's willing to, to have some time regardless of what happens. I'd be, I'd be interested to know what, what her independent legal conclusions are, so maybe we can refine the process, improve the process moving forward, whatever, but, um, no, it, it, it's the city council, that they can in all respect that, one hundred percent, that's how city governments operate, that's how republics, democracies, that's how they operate, so that's, I've just thrown that out there, I have no issues one way or the other, and I, I'd be very happy to work with Grant, I have no, nothing against Grant if it didn't work out, so, thank you, I appreciate your time. Um, and, and I'd be happy to answer any, any other questions that maybe, uh, anyone may have.
So I, I have a question, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Um, I just wanna understand the process here. So if someone, a community has an ordinance in place, they can't hire you after that, they have to hire you before the ordinance is in place?
So, um, as far as Five Rule goes, I, I don't wanna speak for Bobby, I think Bobby is not gonna work with the community and Five Rule is not gonna work with the community unless Savala is also involved. Um, you know, I, I, I'm not, I'm not in a position to, uh, you know, foreclose, um, business opportunities later on down the road, who knows? Um, but I, I think pretty clearly, if, if you wanna work with Five Rule, you have to work with Savala. Um, I-
Yeah, that's not my question, hold on, that's not my question. My question is, if, if, if a, if a community has an ordinance in place, they have it, they wanna hire you, can they send that ordinance to you, you can review it and say, this is one we will, we will agree with, and we can then come on board? Or can they only work with you if they don't have an ordinance in place and have to build it with you?
No, you can, you can adopt the ordinance and then bring us on board. Um, once you review the ordinance, we may have to have you amend the ordinance or amend your code so that it falls into our system. Um, and then, it's not really about, it probably sounds like I'm wanting to be very controlling, but it's more about making sure that I know our process and our system and what's working and what's not working. But no, if you hi, if you adopt the ordinance and you go on your very way and you decide it's not working for you to do it on your own, and you wanna bring us back in, then yeah, we should review your ordinance and you're not shutting the door on working with us forever just by adopting the ordinance on your own.
And I apologize for misunderstanding your question.
That's okay. Um, so my next question is, is if we have an ordinance, we don't currently have any fees in our ordinance, but we would put fees in our resolution. So if our ordinance and resolution were agreeable, would that be, cause you say, well, we like to have fees, well, we understand that, uh, to encourage people to register. So the question is, again, an ordinance written and a resolution, and then that, would those two pieces together work with you?
Well, on purpose, I would still want you to have fees.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree, I agree, but fees in a resolution. We still have them, but we just wouldn't have them in the ordinance. Does that still work?
So I, I, this is a little bit of a pop-out answer, but I, I refer to your, to Tana for that, um, but if I were working with the municipality, I would prefer fees to be in the ordinance specifically set out a, a numerical amount. However, if the ordinance did, you know, authorize an amount of fees to be set by a resolution, I, I don't know that I, I have any issue with that. Uh, if the ordinance said fees to be determined by a resolution of a governing body, and then the, the city council did pass a resolution- and then the, the city council did pass a resolution, um, amended, you know, implementing a fee structure, I, I'd have no issue with that from a legal perspective, but, um, I just recommend you to, to refer to Tana with any questions about, uh, you know, ordinance, ordinance or, or resolution, um, interact, interaction.
And usually we do that because we pass fees by resolutions or ordinances. So that if we need to change them, it's easier to change.
I don't know if you've caught that, John, that's our precedent, we, we, uh, in, in the majority of our ordinances there, the wording is for fees to be set by resolution by the governing body.
And if, i- if that were the case, I don't know that I'd have any issue, um, you know, sending someone in English with fees as reflected by the resolution. Um, I would prefer it to be in the ordinance, but that's just my personal preference for how I would like it to look. If it were consistent with the or, if the resolution were consistent with the ordinance and author and title ordinance, I'd have no, no real issue with enforcing, implementing that fee structure.
Yeah, that sounds like the solution to me, actually. I'm willing to work that that way, so, and I know it's not the same, but it's working around there too big, they're really different. And then my question for Tana is, is the ordinance is, uh, it written now, we added the lean part that you already mentioned, it's written now as something that you feel is defensible for the city?
Based on the way that this language is, I mean, yes, there's always inherent risk of anything being passed, but, um, you're not overstepping any bounds by the way that this is specifically written based on duties of urban administrator, city administrator, or property owner.
So it kinda feels like we skipped a step where we bring them in and work through it, we kinda just did that on our own. You know, we came up with a resolution that, or ordinance that we can potentially agree on and then we can defend in court.
I mean, and like I've said before, like there's always an inherent risk just because of the fact that this is a new, fortunate of a lot, and so there's always, there's things in here like the way that these statutes are written, I wish that they were written better, absolutely. I wish they were more concise and clear and if there was about fifteen more of them to actually spell out everything that is supposed to happen in this? Yes, but that's not what we, what we were given, um, you know.
And that's from the state.
Yes, and so I mean, it's whether or not you as a council are willing to take on that risk of implementing something new seeing if it works, if it doesn't work, the potential of any sort of liability that comes from that. And that's what we face that way as a council.
Anybody have any more questions for John or Bobby?
But I mean, obviously my suggestion would still be not entering into the other portions of that, um, con, like the contract with federal or.
And so you guys.
There's just a lot of things that still need to kinda patch out and so.
Yeah, it sounds like based on our process, we've got the ordinance passed, resolution passed, and we have to have a look at it, see if there's something that even if we totally, we'll send it together, you know.
Well, I certainly.
Everyone's still there.
I definitely don't wanna cut anything off, um, but it, it, the council has, has come to a decision for the point of tonight's meeting. Um, I'm, I, I very much appreciate your time and, um, feel free to reach out to me, um, with any questions. Um, Tana, I, I really would like to, uh, have a little bit more in-depth discussion with you if you have time later this week or, um, it's some, in the near future, I, I truly would be happy to touch base and get your input. Um, but I, I thank you for your time and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Same, same here.
Kimberly? I thought you were gonna say something.
No, I'm freezing.
Someone told.
Yes.
Yes, from the big.
The rabbit cave.
It was an ice dam, we fixed it.
So we don't pass it now, does it table it on the agenda or do we get to, um, I don't know, just to do this thing?
We can take risks.
Or we can move it to a bikini or whatever, you know?
No, I, I would say we may need one of them.
Well.
In the recommendation, if it were to be passed, would we see that in lean to that section? One section, yeah. Just as consistent as the statute.
Well, I guess I'm gonna say is because we're talking to a lot of people about this and one of the things it talks about is it talks about that vacant properties, uh, discourage economic, economic development. And it's one thing that's continually asked about us is the vacant properties. Um, when we looked at, we sent something out, we looked at economic development was actually number two to vacant properties. And then the downtown housing, downtown renovation project was that and then housing. And so we're working on the downtown thing and then if we work on vacant properties, well, that encourages businesses, it encourages houses, it encourages more people to live here. Um, I talked to, uh, the CEO of the hospital, said there's a lot of, you know, seventy twos and sixty eight license plates in that parking lot and those people are living someplace else and paying property taxes in their town. And so there's economic loss by people not being able to live here and they're not shopping in our shops on the weekend. So.
And, and I've also talked to businesses that passed us over because we did not have a store for them.
Yep, and I, and I, and I agree with that, as a, as a business owner, I wanted to have a business on Main Street on ground floor and I was not able to do that. Now, I was thankful that I was able to get on another story, but I know a lot of people that would like to have it on the Main Street. And so I understand as a business owner that, um, that we're losing or, or there's necrotic loss, absolutely, that is, that's true. And what I realized, well, there's a fire risk too, vacant properties, that was something that's made me when I went to the, started to learn about it, there's a risk of fire, you drop the property value, you're hurting your neighbors, if you're, if you're breaking a property, sets a fire, you could hurt them even more. Um, there's risks involved. And I know you have been in all the meetings, but one of the things we've all agreed on is that we don't want a single fee. We don't wanna make a single penny on this. We want people to make vacant properties, not vacant, you know, businesses in town, houses in town. So that's what we want and we hope we don't make any money, any money on this. So because of that, I'll make a move to pass ordinance twenty-three dash one dash zero three enacting the vacant property registration act. And then, and add, and add lean, the wording that Tanya recommended to section.
Oh, I don't know.
Five oh one, like with the leads. Do we need to add per resolution to the fees?
In that, we would set fees per after passing.
And it's set fees per, okay, okay, and we set fees per resolution after passing ordinance.
Second.
Would Tanya?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with Kimberly, Si, Si, I heard her first.
Okay.
Um, Sam moved, Kimberly second, that we pass ordinance number twenty-three zero one zero three enacting the vacant property registration act, adding leans in section five one 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 and set fees per resolution. Any discussion? Kimberly had it up.
Yes.
Tierney?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried.
So do we just let these? Tana, do we let these drop off or do we actually have to make a motion that we are not approving them since it has action and discussion on there?
Um, I mean, you go over that and then we'll make.
The act of the lack of motion.
All right, action and discussion on approval professional services agreement between five rural rural planning and the city of Grant for vacant property registration. There being no motion, we'll let that fall to the floor. Action and discussion on approval engagement letter between Sevall Law Offices and the City of Grant. There being no motion, we'll let that fall to the floor. And now we are moving on to ordinance twenty-three oh two oh one, Jesse, would you please do the programming?
Ordinance number twenty-three dash zero two dash zero one, an ordinance authorizing and directing execution of the green energy program subscription confirmation by the city of Grant, Carver County, Nebraska, with the municipal energy agency of Nebraska to prescribe the time when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect.
Again, this came, this ordinance came to because, um, this company need to rename themselves?
No, they, what they did, they consolidated the durable energy section into the green energy program. Did not change their rate or the amount that we're currently subscribed to. Um, we have six percent of our energy that we receive produced via wind energy resources and two percent of energy that we purchase via landfill gas entrance.
So that same people working, everything?
Yes.
Just a.
They're just making the name from having wind, landfill, and there's also a hydro, they don't subscribe to any hydro, um, and changing all, changing that into one program called the green energy program.
Okay, to one program.
Yep.
Okay.
So we'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-three oh two oh one, an ordinance authorizing and directing execution of green energy programs subscription confirmation by the city of Grant. Second.
Kimberly moved and Tierney second that we accept ordinance number twenty-three oh two oh one, ordinance authorizing and directing execution of the green energy program subscription. Any discussion? Andrea had it up?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Tierney?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. All right. Last time we had a draft of the audit and we had open, I mean, a public name, sorry, not open name, but public name. So this is the, the final of, um, result of our, of our audit.
Yeah, we just read the drafts, four in, from the water, from the watermark.
And you'll just need to accept the two letters and any statements.
Accept the letters and do I need to sign it? No.
I wanted to make note of, um, statement made by the auditors, this is outside the source, we get audited every year. Um, I know people are concerned about how we spend our money and they should be, cause you know, we live next to you and so, um, and we take it seriously. And the statement the auditors made is we noted no transaction entered into by the city during the year for which there was lack of authoritative guidance for consensus. Every single thing had authoritative guidance and consensus, so, and no transaction was out of bound.
Very good, that's good to know, yes, yes, yes. All right.
I move to accept the audit for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, acknowledging the two letters that we received.
Second.
Andrea moved and Tierney second that we accept the audit for financial year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two and the acceptance of the two letters, any discussion? Tierney?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, new business, I do not believe we had any handouts or anything for the new business. Um, Marlon Wendell, Dennis Hutt, and Galen Lacy have asked to be placed on the agenda.
Well, it's kind of a mute point at this point, I thought that when I had made the request, that it would have been at the time of the, uh, vacant building deal, so I guess there's really not a whole lot to say, you already, we were wanting to discuss. That's what you keep saying is that you want to get on the agenda so that we can interact. And I thought when I put that in there, that it was pretty clear that I was going to, the plan was to interact on the ordinance of the deal. That seems to be a revolve job to go and put us at the back of the agenda, but that seems to be your agenda all the time, if you only wanna listen to who you want to and that's just how it is, but that's, your prerogative, that's fine.
Our agenda is set in this format since I've been here where exact format, roll call, call to order, but we mean that agenda, review of prior meetings, it has been set like this for four years in this order.
Well, I would say that if you would ask the majority of the people that, and you can look at the way I typed it, I asked to be on the discussion for the vacant property registration act.
You're, you're welcome to discuss.
It's already done, it's, it, it, I mean, there, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I mean, you, you didn't give us a handout or a list of, of.
I didn't say I was gonna give you a handout.
Great.
So what, why do I need to give you a handout if I didn't tell you I was gonna give you a handout?
So for clarification, um, I might add just real quick, maybe smooth this up a little bit. Um, because of the way that we've done it with the ordinances and, and the agreements having been tabled, they were pushed into unfinished business. Um, and the way our code, code is currently written, unfinished business comes before new business. Uh, request to be placed on the agenda is new business, not unfinished business. So that is the one, that is why there's an order to say.
Tom, can we have that question?
Yes.
Cause old business is always first for unfinished business.
We also commented at the last meeting about the consistency with ordinances and making sure that we have three readings. And that just gives everybody, every member of the public an opportunity to know what's being discussed before we have anything passed. And every single meeting where there is a reading of a potential ordinance, there would be new business following that first reading, following this second reading.
This is the fourth time, so technically, so we did table, so it could pass classically, yeah.
So there's been, I mean, we, this is from, when was the first reading?
January.
January. January, so it's, it's.
Second meeting in January, I believe.
No, we've been discussing it in January. Cause this is the fourth time it's been on the agenda, no, so you're right.
Second meeting.
Second meeting in January, no.
And, and, and to your, to your point, Kim, that, that, uh, that's, the public comment is always on the agenda. We don't, we don't take public comment off, just for clarification.
All right. There being no, um, discussion, we can move on to the next item. Um, I'm asking the appointment of Edward Dunn, the deputy clerk treasurer, um, so the words of backup for Jesse, basically.
Yeah, so it was worded this way in a previous code book, Jesse hired, are kinda. Uh, Jesse and I are kind of doing an internal audit on the municipal code. Um, it's going to be five years next year since we've, I know, this seems like this year, I, I know, I know. Uh, but it won't be five years since we've, we've done, uh, an audit of the, uh, code and I feel like that's probably the schedule we need to stay on. So part of what Jesse and I are doing is sort of an internal audit before we send it off to McCallie Law and get their input, um, before we tackle this again next year, so look forward to that. Um, but in doing so, we, we did find that, uh, it is missing, it is missing that, uh, we, I, there needs to be a backup for Jesse, we have issues there.
So by appointing Edward that way, does that give him the, to back up if she would happen to be gone? Is that kind of why we have to do it this way and there are certain?
And there's other things, that's why I have in there that we need to ratify it back to the April.
So this is the over.
Yeah.
Yes. And we'll be working on an ordinance change?
We, we, and I've notified McCallie Law and they were, they, they said we apologize, they were a little bit, it was an interior code.
Okay. So beginning, um.
All, all good things here, you know, we, we start to do these things, we find things and they, they find things so we can get our, get our Ps and Qs done. So we don't have a six month or eight month long lead like we did.
Right.
And we accept action on the role appointment that was done, deputy clerk treasurer, beginning April twenty-third, two thousand nineteen.
Through the current year.
Through the current year.
So that.
Second. And then now we have some questions, sorry. Did that end order?
So that was a second?
Should that be on our, like, will that be on our sheet at the end of the year type thing from now on?
Plus, I'd be sure that it's in the next one.
Or, or we'll have it changed that it's by ordinance that it is like, be that it's in black or white.
Right. So that's right.
The previous one, city, city secret.
Okay. All right, so Tierney moved, Andrew you second, that Edward Dunn be the deputy clerk treasurer, starting April twenty-third, two thousand nineteen through current year, any more discussion? Get that, yeah, Sam, have you got it?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Tierney?
Yes.
Kimberly? All right, motion carried. I have another mayor appointment to the cemetery board, thank you, to Tony Wyatt for, um, volunteering.
I move to accept Tony Wyatt to the cemetery board.
Second.
And move, Sam second, that we accept Tony Wyatt to the cemetery board as a mayoral appointment, any discussion?
Tony is a, Tony is a rock star volunteer, for those of you who don't know, she also serves on the airport. So, um, she seek us out, because she was seeking more to do. And he said, I can find more for you to do, Tony. Um, so we're very appreciative of all, of our volunteers.
I agree with you.
I appreciate the, the mayor for, for the one hundred and fifty, she did things on the, and it fills out in case we were missing members and so on and so forth, so. There's my discussion, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, Tierney, have you got it? Yes. Sam?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion carried. So that is very nice, having a personal on the cemetery board.
Yes.
Action and approval certificate of completion and release for the Grant Municipal Airport Project three, three one zero zero, three five zero one three. And we need, um, the mayor's authorized to sign.
Yes, so this, this is the plan that the project is going to use and complies with all of the, and, uh, provision of Aeronautics standards that this does. Similar to what we just did with the law.
I move to approve the certificate of completion and release for Grant Municipal Airport Project number three dash three one dash three zero, three five dash zero one three.
Second. Andrew moved and Kimberly second to accept the approval.
And ask for.
On the mayor needs to sign.
Oh, and mayor needs to sign.
And would you second that amendment?
I would.
Thank you.
Okay, so Andrew, you have moved and Kimberly second on the approval certificate of completion with mayor authorization to sign. Any discussion? Kimberly, have you got it?
Yes.
Tierney?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrew? Motion carried, very good. All right, everyone have a chance to look at buildings and claims?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Put an action on building claim in the amount of one hundred two thousand, six hundred thirty-nine dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
Tierney moved and Sam second that we accept building claims in the amount of a hundred two thousand, six hundred thirty-nine dollars and sixty cents. Any discussion? Sam, have you got it?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Tierney?
Yes.
All right, motion carried. We are adjourned at eight thirteen. Very good, thank you, everyone, thank you for participating. Some stuff for me to sign, sound good or? Welcome back.